We got seven o'clock. All right, we'll call this meeting to order.
All rise.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. I'm going to yield to our county executive. He wanted to share a moment of silence, special moment of silence tonight. I'm going to yield to him to start, and then we'll go to our pastor.
Early on, I spoke to Chairman Langford, and I think tonight is an important time of our history. I don't think anyone here would disagree that we need to stand behind the citizens in the country of Ukraine to show solidarity for freedom. Many lives have already been lost, many lives of innocence, and we've got a dictator, was a communist, that, you know, decided to invade this country, and these poor innocent people are trying to live their lives and live their lives in freedom. So if you would, join me in a moment of silence in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Our pastor tonight is Pastor Todd Alexander from House of Grace Assembly of God. He's served at House of Grace for the past 10 years. He's a 12-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps and a former sheriff's deputy and department chaplain in Johnson County, Tennessee. He's married to his wife of 41 years, Sherri, the father of two children and grandfather to five. Pastor Alexander, thank you for joining us tonight.
My honor, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you join me in prayer? Lord, our forefathers would pray, eternal Father, strong to save. And Lord, tonight, we call on you, the eternal Father, our Creator, and invite your presence in this place. Father, we ask that your presence here would guide conversations, decisions. Your word tells us if we lack wisdom, ask for it. And I pray, God, if there are opportunities tonight where we need wisdom, we would ask you for it in these chambers, God. Lord, we do pray for Ukraine, and God, we pray that you would protect and strengthen them in this hour. And Father, for all these things, we give you thanks in advance, asking them in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
You have joined me in the pledge of flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, your regular and consent agenda, or before you use our motion to approve our regular and consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Rhodes, seconded by Commissioner Ring. Mr. Mansfield.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, if I could, add something to the agenda tonight. I emailed legislative about it in December and never heard a response back to get it on in January, but wanted to revisit the OWL policy that we did for recording committee meetings. I T. The Director requested that I bring that back before the commission, several items. Two things, one being time period of getting things loaded, taking like two weeks, sometimes three weeks, and I said it two or three days. Second thing is the OWL device, past three months has just not been available or broken. Past two times I've gone, it's just not in the closet, and we bought two of those things along with the computers. So I wanted to revise that policy to require that both OWL devices stay in the commission closet since we pay for it, and also that the videos be uploaded within two business days after recording of a committee meeting.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. It's actually an amendment to our agenda. As such, will require 16 votes to add from the floor tonight. So a yes vote is to add the OWL policy recommendations to the agenda. A no vote is to not add it to the agenda tonight. Commissioner Taylor, you're in the queue. Did you want to speak to this item, or, okay?
All right.
No, he doesn't.
I did have one more thing after this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
This will be the vote to add to the agenda?
Yes, a yes vote is to add the OWL policy to the agenda, a no vote is to not add it to the agenda.
The amendment to the agenda is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Commissioner Mansfield?
I was wanting to know if we could rearrange and legislative have item number two first before item number one. So 2202-03 before 2202-02.
Hang on, one second, just a clarification from the law director.
It's got to be done this way first.
Okay, legally, it has to be done.
Legally, we have to accept the property before we do this.
Okay. Good, good. Why don't you just explain it real quick?
We have to detect the land first before we do it. Otherwise, it could not.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir. 2202-07, General Ops.
On consent?
Yes.
You want to pull that to?
Well, actually, I don't even think it should be on the agenda, because there was a motion made and properly seconded in committee, but it was never voted on.
But it was what?
There was no vote taken. I asked questions about a 2018 vehicle. I was told they were going to get with Chief Deputy Pickard and get back with us. So there was never a vote cast.
Okay, hang on, let me get a clarification on that, Mr. Taylor. Go ahead. Ben, did you want to speak on that?
Sure.
Okay. Here, hang on, we'll need a microphone. Just go to that one real quick.
Commissioner Taylor, my understanding was that it was voted on with just that information would be gotten before it went to the main floor. I sent out an email that described, I have the forms right here for the vehicles, if you'd like to.
There's a video available that you can look at as well. There was no vote taken. Because had there been a vote taken, I'd have voted against it. It was not voted on. So it shouldn't be on the agenda.
Well, we can add it by 16 votes.
And you still violate proper parliamentary procedure.
Okay, we're going to have to pause for a moment. We're going to need to refer to the budget minutes.
No, it's General Ops.
Or General Ops, I'm sorry, General Ops. All right, Ms. Shell.
Mr. Taylor did request that information during the General Ops meeting, and we did say that we would get it out. Mr. Pickard, the guy, the person that was getting the information was out of town, so he was a little bit delayed in getting it. As soon as he got it, I had the law director's office send that out to the committee. To be honest, without rewatching the video, I wouldn't know if there was a vote taken or not. It happened twice in committee tonight where something was, a motion was made and seconded, and we forgot to vote on it, and, you know, somebody said, we didn't vote, and we did it. So I'm human like everybody else. We may have made an error and not voted on it. So if you want to do it with a vote of 16, if we need to adjust the agenda to do that. But just from recollection, I don't remember if we voted on it or not, sir. Sorry about that.
Okay, it's okay. I'm going to take 2207, 02-07 off the agenda currently. If someone would like to make a motion to add it back on, then we'll vote on that.
I'll make a motion to add it back on.
Okay. All right. Hang on, let me go to Mr. Becker first. He's in the queue, and then I'll come to you, Michelle. Mr. Becker?
Well, let's, if we, I've got a different topic.
Okay, all right. Michelle, go ahead.
I will make a motion that we add it back to the agenda.
Okay, motion that we add 22, what's listed as 2202-07 back onto the agenda, surplus sheriff's department items. Motion made by Commissioner Shell, seconded by Commissioner Goode. All right, same thing, a, and I'll come to you in a second, Mr. Taylor. Same thing will apply. A yes vote is to add it back to the agenda, okay? A no vote is to leave it off the agenda. Commissioner Taylor?
Well, no doubt I'll be voting not to add it to the agenda, because I never got the information, being a member of the General Operations Committee. It was not sent to me. So whatever information came after the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so a yes vote is to add it to the consent agenda, a no vote is to leave it off the agenda.
The amendment to the agenda is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 19 affirmative votes. The amendment is approved.
Okay, Mr. Becker, I'll come back to you, Mr. Taylor.
Can you turn this?
There you go.
I was just curious, on the financial committee, we met tonight, and I didn't know, Mr. Long, does that something, do we need to add this to the agenda tonight, or is that elsewhere?
The legislative committee is sent it off board in conjunction with our program for financial management.
It's actually under the consent agenda, but if possible, I would like to make the request of the amendment tonight to be added to it.
So I'll make a motion to pull 2202-09, or I'd like to pull 2202-09 off the consent and onto the regular agenda.
Okay, we'll just, we'll put that under financial management.
Okay.
2202-09.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I would like to pull 2202-07 off the consent agenda.
Okay. Yeah, it would already fall, because we've pulled it. I may have misspoken, but we'll put it, we'll put it under General Ops, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, all in favor of approving our regular consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I show Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield, Commissioner Mo Taylor voting no. Any other no's? Okay, 22 to 2, agenda is approved. All right, your minutes are, we're in your packet, all in favor, or is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion made by Commissioner Foster, is there? Second, seconded by Commissioner Gomenden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak?
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. All right, reported to the chair, just a few. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Becker for taking care of the, running the ship last month. If you've, thankfully, it looks like we're finally moving on from COVID. I hate to say anything, because every time we thought we were before, there was a new variant or something, but looking at our numbers countywide, we look, we look pretty good. So thankfully, you know, we, we've weathered the storm. But thank you, Mr. Becker, for covering for me when I was dealing with it and recovering. We had a couple of thank yous. The Mansfield family wrote, wrote to us. This note comes to you to thank you and appreciation for sending a contribution to Meals on Wheels in memory of Charles Thomas Mansfield. During the last few years of his life, we enjoyed getting food so thoughtfully prepared by his, by this program. He would have enjoyed knowing people were giving money to such a, such a cause in his memory. At the visitation and funeral, it was so nice to visit with family and friends like Merrill Hyde and Mo Taylor, who could sympathize and empathize with our grief. Our families comforted, knowing people continue to pray for us during this difficult grieving process. Thank you again for the expressions of sympathy you shared with our family. Warm regards to the Mansfield family. And Commissioner Mansfield, know that your family still remains in our, in our thoughts and prayers. And then Commissioner Shell. Sorry, there it is. Okay, commissioners and colleagues, thank you so much for your, for the kindness shown to my family during my mother's passing. We truly appreciate the donations made in honor of Mom's memory to benefit EMS and military families in need. From Commissioner Shell, Commissioner Shell, you also, your family also remains in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. All right, our veteran service report was in your packet, and then I'm going to yield the floor for a very special presentation tonight to Commissioner Tucker. Really excited for this, for our proclamation tonight.
Good evening. I'd like to ask Betsy Hawkins to come forward, please, and then Ms. Alice and Mr. Jim, if y'all'd like to come as well, y'all are welcome to come. Thank y'all for being here this evening. I am so proud to be honoring Mr. Alfred Rogers this evening for his service to our country during World War II and on a major milestone of reaching his 100th birthday coming up on Saturday, March the 5th. Mr. Rogers is not able to be with us this evening, but his daughter, Betsy, is and will be accepting this proclamation on his behalf. But first, I would like to share a little bit about Mr. Rogers, and the information that I'll be sharing with you comes from emails and video interviews with Mr. Rogers that's in the Library of Congress. So Mr. Rogers was drafted into the Army December of 1942 at the age of 20. He rose very quickly to staff sergeant and as supply sergeant. Sent to Australia in September of 1943 for further training, then in April of 1944, sailed up the coast of New Guinea to Hollandia, sorry, I'm not good at this, a Dutch territory, and took part in mopping up operations. In May 28, we invaded the island of Bioc, now some called Bosnich, in modern maps between New Guinea and the Philippines. He was part of a crew operating a 40-millimeter Beaufort's automatic cannon, plus they had 40, they had some four-barrel 50s of electric turrets that were deadly against low-flying aircraft. The Army found his IQ of 141, the second highest in the battalion of 800 men. Highest was 142, a guy from Boston. Minimum of 115 was required for an officer's candidate school. He was interviewed by a panel while in the Pacific and placed on a waiting list for field commission, but war ended suddenly. Invasion of Japan was scheduled for November 1st. He was probably lucky, he says. Life expectancy of a second lieutenant was, during such an invasion, probably was less than a day. Instead, he was transferred to 208th Regimental Headquarters and served until the end of the war as a sergeant in charge of the enlisted men manning the plotting board buried deep beneath Moncker Airfield. Something that I found very fascinating, he says that you will find in his mementos box, a copy of our presidential unit citation signed by President Roosevelt, I think credited with about 17 planes downed. They did not get to leave the island until December 1st, 1945, which was five months after the war ended. They had to wait that long for a ship to come get them after the war ended. So Mr. Rogers did return home after the war. He did attend college on the GI Bill and became a surgeon. Mr. Rogers is still very active and loves camping. And so for his birthday and to honor his service, I do have a proclamation that I would like to give to his daughter, Betsy, on our behalf.
Mr. Tucker, Chris Tucker, did you want to make a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Motion made by Chris Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I will very briefly say, hi Dad, because he's watching online. About 15 years ago, I took Dad to Washington, DC to see the World War II memorial, not long after it had opened. And while we were walking around, a student, looked to be about a middle school student, walked up to him and said, thank you for your service. My dad had never heard anyone say that to him before, and he was taken aback. He didn't know exactly how to respond. And I remember so keenly that he said, son, we did what anybody would do when your house is on fire. You join your countrymen and you fight to put it out. And he has said that to anyone from then on. I've heard him say that, that I was just putting out the fire in my house. So on behalf of my father, I thank you very much for this honor.
All right, we've got our docketing Highway Public Works Fund analysis. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Kruger, is there? Second, seconded by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your financial statement memo is attached, and then we've got our consent agenda items. Remember that we have pulled 2202-07 and 2202-09 off. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda items? Commissioner Stewart, motion, second, seconded by Commissioner Gomenden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got one no vote, two no votes, so a vote of 22 to 2. Consent agenda items are approved. All right, we'll go to our, your written reports by county officials are included in your packet. Notaries, 2202-OT. Is there a motion to approve our, motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, is there? Seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
And a squeaker, the notaries pull through. All right, we'll go to our standing committees, committee on committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met tonight in its regular scheduled time, February 28, 2022. There was two items on the agenda for business tonight. The Highway Commission was a reappointment by the county mayor for Tom Neal. It was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Hinton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I've got Commissioner Mansfield, Commissioner Mo Taylor voting no. I have 22 affirmatives. Motion passes 22 to 2. Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item on the board was Parks and Recreation Board, but Tom Tucker had resigned. County mayor made appointment, Mike Honeycutt. It was unanimous, I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded made by Commissioner Nipper. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I have Commissioner Mo Taylor, Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield voting no. I have 22 in the affirmative. Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Goode?
That's it, Mr. Chairman. No business at this current level for next month.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sullivan, education?
Yes, sir. The Education Committee met on February 7. Dr. Phillips was in attendance. He shared with us some of the COVID numbers. Those are settling down. We're thankful for that. The Liberty Creek campus is coming along, high school, elementary school. The middle school bids were on hold, and that'll be coming back to the, to the county commission in April.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Emergency services. Okay, thank you, Mr. Driver. General Ops, Michelle.
I know I touched it. Chris told me to push the button, Mr. Kemp. So Gen Ops met on February the 7th at our regular scheduled meeting, and there was a couple items. The one that is being pulled off of the consent agenda is 2202-07, which is the surplus items from the Sumner County Sheriff's Department. That included 17 vehicles that they were surplusing. All of the vehicles had over 116,000 miles on them, with the exception of one, which was a 2018 Ford Explorer, I do believe, that was involved in an accident. So during the meeting, there was, as I said earlier, a request for clarification, because some of them were newer models, especially that one that was involved in the, in the wreck. So those were emailed out to the committee on February the 24th at 11:29 from the law director's office. If anyone did not receive those, may want to check with IT for issues with emails, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Shell, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Taylor?
Well, if that vehicle was totaled, was it someone else's fault, and we received compensation from an insurance company, or was it just rolled off?
Go ahead and hit your, hit your mic. All right, see no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I have two no's. Commissioner Mansfield, Commissioner Taylor. I have 22 in the affirmative. Motion passes. Michelle?
That's it, sir.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Highway Committee, Mr. Hinton?
We did a kind of a recap of increase in expenses for the road department. We should have waited a couple more weeks, and we could have put gas in at double. But, but anyway, we forwarded that information to the, and it's going to be, it's going to be hard to muster enough money to do what needs to be done in the roads in Sumner County. We're getting, we're getting further behind. We're not gaining on the, on the process. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hinton. All right, Legislative Committee, Mr. Ring.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is 2202-02, a resolution accepting the agreement to donate three acres to the Sumner County School System, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, is there? Second, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. Mr. Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I was reading through our packet, and the language from the economic implant pact plan states that the developer has indicated willingness to contribute three acres of undeveloped property in order to permit future expansion of Jack Anderson Elementary School. It's a problem for me, and I, you know, I voted against this in, back in May, because of the residential component of this, you know, our lack of adequate funding and a way to pay for schools, schools' growth outside of property taxes. You know, Jack Anderson in 2019 was 97.4 capacity, 4% capacity, so I understand why this is being offered up as a, as a peace offering with residential coming in here that's going to overload that school district and that school. Language in the agenda also stated, it's anticipated that development will become a catalyst for further development of the surrounding areas, and it's expected that the project, the whole of it, basically will accelerate the timing of development in this area, so that, essentially, development is going to occur that would not have without this project. And so what I see here is we're accelerating, accelerating growth in an area that was not naturally occurring and doesn't really have the ability to pay for itself when it comes to school needs. So I just have a problem with how this, offering this up in a way that, you know, we're not going to have the funds for new school construction necessarily. You know, we have a lot of things coming online that don't know how we're going to pay for with, with school salaries. And so I understand economic development is good for adding things like this for industrial, commercial, when the tax base is a positive, but residential's not. And so offering this up as in a sort of an appeasement for what they're getting ready to do to the area with residential is just unsatisfactory to citizens, Mr. Chairman. And so, you know, the vote tonight's just not about an ice hockey rink. It's really about unwanted higher-density residential as part of this project. And so, and all these phases, and includes new school expansions. So I just want to make us aware of that. So I'm not, that's why I wanted to talk about this afterwards, but I'm not in favor of this, just because of the residential growth it's going to bring with this. So I just wanted to make that point tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. See no one else in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 20 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Ring?
Oh, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is 2202-03, approving an economic impact plan for the Shoot Lane development area. An ISO move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring, is there? Second, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Commissioner Chris Taylor?
Yes, sir, I just want to make sure that we all have a good understanding of this. So Ms. Denham and Mr. Long, please correct me if I'm wrong. I just want to.
I just want to kind of paraphrase it for us. What they're asking for is 30 million for infrastructure. It's going to be paid by them, in the sense, because what's going to happen is they're going to front the money. We're going to use the property tax that would be brought up from the commercial part of that to help pay off that bond over the next 30 years. So it's money we don't have right now. The county's not going to be out any money. We're not ever going to be on the hook for the money because the great part is the investor and the builder, if it defaults for some reason, responsible for the bond and not the county. The flip side of that is, we do get the sales tax. And we don't only get the sales tax from that facility. We get it from any of the surrounding properties, hotels, whatever might be built. So just to make sure everybody understands, we're foregoing property tax that we don't get already. And we'll be gaining sales tax, which directly goes to our debt services and our school system. It's kind of a win all the way around, and especially to the point when you look at it, that we're not on the hook for any of it. The investor has said, hey, if it defaults, it's on them completely. Not to beat a dead horse, but this is one of the better ones we're ever going to see. It benefits the county on every level. And the best part about it is it is making improvements to infrastructure in that area. So, thank you.
Commissioner Taylor, is it 30 million or 40 million? I think it's 40 million.
40 million, I apologize. 40 million or 30 years.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Can I explain a little bit?
Sure, go ahead. And then, Mr. Taylor will be next, because Mr. Mansfield's already spoken. Or, I'm sorry, it's new motion, nevermind. We'll go to Mr. Mansfield and Ms. Taylor. We'll go to the law director first. Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself there.
Oh, you turned it off.
There you go.
Okay, can y'all hear me? Okay. The project is $40 million for 30 years. If it's not paid back in 30 years, it is paid for by the developer, not by us. There's a stop on it. Also, recognize what this means is if at the base taxes, if those are, say, they're $10,000 right now on that farm, on that property. And when this is built, the taxes become 960,000, which will be a whole lot more than that. That 950,000 goes toward paying back that $40 million, which has an extremely low interest rate. But, once this is all done, we get all the personal property taxes. So all that commercial means that the personal property taxes that everybody pays on businesses and on all sorts of other things in the county, we get from this parcel of property. Also, if this were not built here, it could be residential. This is, for the most part, going to be commercial development. The money is being spent for infrastructure, to make the drainage better, to make the road better, parking lot, those sorts of things. Also, it's one of those things where it will, it'll be like a ripple effect. Things around it, it'll bring more people to eat, X, Y, and Z. There's hotels. The city of Gallatin is involved. And to a much smaller extent, the city of Hendersonville will be involved. And what this will be is just sort of a destination for the county.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Denon. Mr. Mansfield.
So, Mr. Chairman, thanks for clarifying. I guess it's a 30-year TIF for 40 million. You know, my question is, why would we vote for something that takes away revenue from the schools? And that's what a TIF does immediately, because you're not using that, you're not able to capture those funds. So, you know, if the TIF is being used to finance residential, which is a part of this growth process, the school district's not going to gain new revenue to account for rising school populations as these apartments or houses or whatever, as part of a three-phase project comes online. So, you know, looking at it, if you, if you look at lost money and revenue for schools, you could easily hire two to three new school teachers every year for the next 20, 30 years for one, if you're, by financing this TIF and looking at it, because, you know, TIFs are designed to revitalize areas that are distressed or problematic and more harder to be in places. And this area does not meet the definition of why you need a TIF. And for borrowing this kind of money. You know, I think this can be done without a TIF. If you don't have to have a TIF that you're paying back, you're capturing all that money immediately, once the facility's up. So, and with the residential coming in, you're definitely, as I said, you're overloading and overburdening the school system with an appeasement offering of three acres for a school that we don't have any way to pay for because we're not capturing the dollars that we could have been capturing with tax money on this industrial, commercial, and retail property, because we're foregoing that for the next 30 years. And so, you know, one problem with TIFs is, once they're set aside, they definitely have a tendency to receive less scrutiny when you are looking at it, because they're, they don't get the same scrutiny as the general budgets. I know with the Indian Lake TIF, there was problems with hundreds of thousands of dollars just in transfer fees being sent to banks, you know, and that the citizens were losing out on. So I see that there's just a lot of potential for abuse. I did speak with Hendersonville leaders, who are on the record, you know, supporting this facility. Citizens like the idea of this facility. They like the idea of industrial, commercial for tax base. They like that. They didn't like the location. They thought the location was inappropriate. So that's why I voted against this last time. But I'm definitely wholly opposed to residential as a part of any phases of this project, phase one, two, or three. And there was a south portion that was kind of accidentally shown during, from the ECD director from Gallatin, at a meeting last year around January, February, where it's high-density residential with a proposed marina. So I don't know if that's still part of the process, if that's been taken off the hook. But, you know, you know, at the end of the day, this TIF, in my opinion, is not what's best for the citizens, especially if the project can be done with viability without a TIF. So, and I don't see any reason why a TIF needs to be done to be, do a commercial project for an ice rink. I just think this TIF is just about adding on residential and more components and just basically, it's more profits for the developers, which, you know, I don't blame, fault them for trying to do that. But the taxpayers can suffer for that because of things that we do that cause overflowing of schools and school districts, such as Station Camp or Jack Anderson, it just causes problems. So, you know, I want to move to table this and refer it back to planning until definitely any residential components have been removed and the TIF has been removed.
Okay, law director said they can't go back to planning. It's already been approved by planning.
Then I'll send it back to budget, to table.
Didn't come from budget.
And let me explain one thing, Lauren, to make people understand. This money is not going to build residential. This money is going to build infrastructure, the parking lot, the sewers, the ditch.
The water line.
The water line, lighting, the residential. And there again, the other thing that's different from the Indian Lake TIF. The Indian Lake TIF was a variable rate through a bank, through bonding, through all sorts of stuff. This is being financed completely by the developer. There's not going to be TIF stops and all the crazy things that went on with the Indian Lake. And the money, the sales tax that we will get is going to the school system as it's always done. The personal property taxes on this, which we did not get through the Indian Lake TIF, is going to us. And if this were not built, we would continue to get $10,000 and whatever the amount of taxes are that we get on the dirt. And something like residential could be built there.
Thank you, Ms. Denon.
Agricultural is the least costly to, cost of community service studies on, on impact to county budgets.
It's also the lowest taxed to.
This is correct, but it's also the least amount of services. So, but, so again, my motion is there to table this until the TIF can be removed.
All right, motion's out of order. All right, Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Any motion can be tabled.
What's that?
It'll take 16 votes.
Okay, hang on, let me clarify. So is it out of order or not to table?
I mean, he can always ask, but it's going to take 16 votes.
Okay, all right, well, that's different. Okay. Sorry, I apologize, Commissioner Taylor. All right, so the motion's been made to table, send back to planning, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. All right, a yes vote, it requires 16 votes, a yes vote, we'll send it back to planning. A no vote, we'll keep it on the floor. Let's vote.
Motion to table the resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion to table fails to carry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Commissioner Mo Taylor was next in the queue. Hang on one sec, okay. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner. You're good.
Turn it on or not?
No, you're good, you're good.
You got me, all right.
You're good.
I'm trying to watch this one over here and make sure I don't do what he does. Anyways, out of all due respect, and it may be on a clarification purpose, but it sounds like a sales pitch to me. I've never seen the law director pitch something as much as I have this project.
I'm trying to explain.
Anyways, we just had mentioned across the room there during a chairman report about the finances of the highway department and different things that we're facing. Anybody that's poured up to a gas pump knows what we're facing. Diesel fuel's even worse if you run commercial trucks. I don't think we've seen the impacts yet that we're going to see in the downturn of the economy. And I'm no economist, but it doesn't, I mean, with inflation the way that we have it right now, the cost of goods doubling and tripling in some instances of different products. I mean, I can't, I can't support this because when we, when we do something to cause all this growth and everything, it impacts our schools, our roads, our emergency services, fire protection. You know, there's usually one person or one group of people that we turn to when we don't have no money or we don't have the money to pay or buy for everything we want. And that's the property owners. We've tucked our hands and stuck them in the property owner's pockets twice in less than five years by this body right here. And I'm not going to vote for anything that I think will add to the next one. And I clearly think this will add to the next one. You can argue and say whatever what you want. That's my beliefs. I have the right to believe based on the research that I do and the people I listen to. And I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, I was just curious, on the development plan I'm looking at here, is this, is this 100% in the county or, I didn't think it was? So, so what is, what are we being, as a county, what are we being asked for versus what are the cities being asked for?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, one sec, hang on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
It's a joint project with the city of Hendersonville, city of Gallatin County. And they're all joining in this tax increment finance deal. Part of the tax increment finance is, you have to identify area. And that area falls in that permanently until that TIF is retired, until that financing has been paid off. So, right now, there's already been zoning changes approved for the Gallatin Park and the County Park. The city of Hendersonville section, it's still at its base zoning. So the zoning's already there. So it can be built anyway without the tax increment financing. The reason this is a good deal for the county is, is that we not only gleam all the sales tax, personal property tax, and hotel motel tax, but the main reason is, the predators, as far as their NFL franchise, is basically sponsoring this facility, which will be a huge draw for Middle Tennessee. The reason we want tourism in this county is because these people come in, they spend their money, they stay in the hotels, they buy food, they do all these other things. And after two or three days, maybe they stay a week, they leave. So we really don't provide that many services. And the, a very small part of this is residential on the Gallatin side. But all the rest of it that has been approved so far is commercial. So this is a beyond great deal for the county. I think the budget chairman said this earlier. We are not backing this. The city of Gallatin, the city of Hendersonville, the county with our full faith and credit. So if, for whatever reason, this thing goes sideways, the developer, the owner of the property, is backing it. He's paying for it. It falls back on them. Not only that, they're not trying to appease anybody. Out of the goodness of their heart, they donated three acres. I don't know if you understand what three acres of land cost down there, but it is not cheap. So, any way you say it, this doesn't take a dime away from the schools. Actually, it finances the schools. All sales tax that we collect as a county either goes to debt service or goes directly to fund the school system. And I can tell you, the majority of the debt service is for us doing what we need to do, and that's building new schools and adding on to schools and repairing schools. And the school board's a great partner. I cannot believe that anyone would say, and that's very disingenuous, to say that for some reason, this is going to take anything away from our school system. If we cannot do something rather than build residential housing, we can't fund for services for the county. And commercial and tourism is the fastest way for us to fund anything in our county with services without overburdening our residents. Because commercial is assessed at 40% rather than 25% on property tax. They pay personal property, they pay sales tax, and they pay business taxes and license. So they pay way more money in than the services they consume. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holt. Commissioner Becker.
So a second question I had, maybe, maybe to the law director. Help me understand, and maybe it's just me, but, so for the first, I guess for the entire, I guess, 30 years or whatnot, what is the county getting above and beyond paying back, paying us back?
Sales tax, hotel motel tax, personal property tax. And you realize, it could be, I mean, and Mr. Goode is more the expert on this. We paid back Indian Lake in, what, 13 years? Even with the high interest rates? So I mean, if this thing is the resounding success, they think, we could have it paid back in a whole lot faster time period than that.
So is every, so is, is all the money we get, we get in, does it go toward paying it back? And then whenever that gets paid off, then all of a sudden we're... So to your point, it may be less than 30, but it could be the full 30.
It could be a full 30.
So it could be a full 30 years before we're getting more money than, than we're paying off? Is that...
I think, hang on, let me see if I can clarify. Go ahead, Fisher Holt.
They have a baseline for their tax.
Can you hear this mic?
And they're not paying $10,000. And that, they're probably paying on agricultural land, somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000. We keep collecting that. That never goes away. What a TIF is, it's the incremental part, just like Indian Lake. When they build the ice hockey rink, it's completed, you get a certificate of occupancy, bam, the taxes go up. They have to pay that. But that's paid into service of debt. They build a hotel, bam, the taxes go up. That additional money goes to pay the debt. When anything else is built, above that original $3,000 or whatever it is, the baseline, that property tax goes in to pay back the debt. Once that debt is paid off, whether that's 10, 20, or 30 years, the TIF's done. It's over. Then, just like Indian Lake, we collect all the property tax in. When Indian Lake was paid off, that was a, what, $2 million instant boost? Within a few, couple of years, it was $2.5 million, and it's climbing ever since. But during this whole time, we collect sales tax, personal property tax, hotel motel tax, and that all goes to fund county services. So that's all we're paying is that incremental part. We are not giving up one red dime. Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Becker.
Yeah, that answers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Tinsley.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm not really sure kind of who to direct some of these to. So I'm just going to kind of start talking, and you can direct them as you please. So my first thing is, is there like an official set in stone? So, my first thing is, is there like an official set in stone? This is gone before the planning commission? This is 100% what they are doing?
Yes.
Okay. So, my, my second question kind of feeds off that. This is, I'm sure, because I've seen projects like this before, isn't something that, you know, they're going to stick a shovel in one afternoon, and the next morning, we're going to wake up and drive by, and this whole project is going to be complete, and people are living there. So, like, is there a timeline of what they're doing or, you know, like, are they doing this in phases?
According to the law director, what's been presented so far is a five to 10-year build out for everything.
So, they could, you know, spend a couple of years building the ice hockey rink and then put a hotel up in a couple of years, and then maybe put a restaurant in and...
I think it's faster than that.
Okay. But, but it's not like they're going to start building from one side of this property to the other side of this property all at once in continuation?
They can develop however they want to.
No, let's not.
Remember one thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Holt.
The zoning is already in place, so they can do whatever they want to now. They're just asking for this, and the county attorney alluded to this earlier, to do the road improvements, to put sewer in, to build parking lots, to build the water retention, to do those kind of things to make the development more acceptable to the residents. I mean, we want to go in there, we want to make sure we put infrastructure in place to service this. And so, I think that's what it's all about versus they already have the zoning now, and trust me, the man who owns the property has enough resources to do the development it is now. The difference is, I think they're being socially responsible and trying to make it fit into the area and make sure the infrastructure is in place, if that makes sense.
I'm not sure, Mr. Tinsley, did that answer your question?
Sort of. So, my, what I'm trying to get at is that it's not, this isn't a project that's an overnight project.
Right.
Right. So, this is a kind of a long-term, they're, they're here and they're investing in, because I mean, I live a mile from here, so I feel like I know the property a little bit better probably than most of the people on the commission. So, it's, it's not something they're going to go in and start, you know, working on and have this done in like six months, and there's going to be, you know, million condos or whatever built, and thousands of schools sold in going to Jack Anderson.
Right.
So, okay. So, this is to help fund road improvements, drainage issues, infrastructure that's already needed on shoot lane currently that they're going to help fund, and we're going to get something out of it?
I, I think that probably, correct me if I'm wrong, if I summarize what I've heard tonight, the infrastructure supports the growth of the TIF area.
Right.
So, it will support the hockey rink, the hotel, everything else that will go as part of the development, but it will also fix some of the issues that we see, you know, when Jack Anderson lets in and lets out each day.
So, I'll be able to actually leave the neighborhood between 7:30 and 8:30 and come back between 3:30 and 4:30? Okay.
You should be safer to do that, Mr. Tinsley.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few questions I want to ask. I heard the term mentioned ripple. I, I'm, I'm just concerned that this might be a tsunami instead of a ripple. What will prevent every other commercial development that comes to Sumner County from applying for such a sweet deal as this?
I guess they could. It would be up to the cities and county to respond.
In essence, are we becoming the guarantor of the bonds?
No, sir. The developer is putting the money up. We're foregoing, we're foregoing the tax revenue beyond what we collect on the current property until the, until the bond is paid off.
Right. But at the end of 30 years, if something goes amiss and we have, I'm a survivor of the other TIF.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm plenty anxious about this.
Yeah. It's, this one is, according to the law director, this one is structured differently. If anything goes south, whether it's two years or 30 years, the money owed on the bond would go to the developer, not to the county or the cities.
Has that already been drawn up?
Yes, sir.
By, by whom?
Okay. I'm going to let the law director answer that one, Mr. Hyde.
The gentleman I have on, on my phone, Mark Manitov, who is the TIF expert in the state of Tennessee, he's in Knoxville, he drew up the TIF documents for, what did we put in Portland? My brain is...
Tractor, Tractor Supply.
Tractor Supply. He has done this all over, all over Tennessee, and instead of us getting, I mean, there's a lot of people that do it a lot, this is all he does. And like I said, I have him on the phone if there's any questions that I can't answer.
Is he the same expert that drew up the other TIF documents?
No, sir. No, sir.
Pardon?
All right.
I think that's all I have. I'm still in somewhat of a quandary about this. It's, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Commissioner Graves has not been in the queue yet.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've got some, so this is a private development, right? A private individual company developing this?
Yes.
So, if I'm thinking, and I'm going to concur with Commissioner Hyde, I'm a little skeptical about this too, because I ain't seen no interest rate numbers or nothing like that. But, so this developer won't have to pay directly for infrastructure, water lines, sewer, or any of that stuff? You're talking about a...
Hang, hang on, hang on. Go ahead, Ms. Graves.
I don't know what you say, Mr.
Hang on. Go ahead and finish your comment, Ms. Graves, and then I'll get your answer.
Do, who pays for the infrastructure?
Okay. I'm going to let the county mayor answer that.
Well, I can tell you who pays for it. The developer does, because they still have to pay the taxes, and they have to pay the taxes on the unimproved property. The difference is that increment above what the original tax was, property tax on the, on the property goes to pay off the debt. So, that's who's paying for it, because they're paying it in, in property taxes. They don't get a break on that.
They're getting a break on, Mr. Chairman and county mayor, they're getting a break on the infrastructure, the water lines, the sewer, you can't tell me they're not, because it's in there. They're not writing a check for it, correct?
They're writing a check for the taxes.
Not, not for the taxes. Don't have anything to do with. Who pays? Is that money going to come out of the taxes or the bond?
I, I think, let me see if I can make, I'm going to, I'm going to take a stab at Ms. Graves, see if, I'm just going to try to summarize what I've heard, is that the investor, the investor is putting up the money for the TIF, okay? So, the, the 40, or they're putting, they're going to sell the bond, the $40 million, yeah, right, is guaranteed by the developer, okay? What we, what the county and the city of Gallatin, city of Hendersonville forego is the increased tax revenue, like, when the hotel opens, we will still get the current tax rate that we got is when it's undeveloped, until the TIF is paid off, at which point we get all the property tax. So, the county is not footing the bill for the infrastructure because the bond is backed by the developer, is my understanding.
That is correct, and that's what I was saying. The last time we backed the bond with our credit and good faith, and so if something were to happen and the bond didn't get paid off, it would have fallen on the county to pay it. This time, if the TIF goes haywire, and for whatever reason it doesn't get paid off at the end of 30 years, the developer has to put up the money upfront. He's hung out to dry for paying the rest of the debt. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Okay.
Still, I don't know if I got my question answered, but it's getting closer. If, if, who knows what's going to happen 25 years from this year, 25 or 20?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that developer may not, he may not be around here. He may be vacationing in the Bahamas, you know, as far as I know, or he might not be living. That's a sad comment, but that company might not be in business. So, is it possible we still would have to pay that bond? Or is it, that money's not going to be in there? Now, we're collecting taxes, I understand that.
Well, the gentleman that's developing it puts up the money to begin with for it. This just pays that back. So, it doesn't make any difference if he's dead, or he runs off, or the Martians abduct him. I mean, the money's still there, and it's been paid for.
Okay. I'm going to go to Commissioner Chris Taylor, Budget Chair, to address this.
Mr. Graves, I understand what your question is. What you're saying is, if, heaven forbid, something happened, the economy tanks, whatever, and that business isn't as lucrative as they hope it is, who's on, who has to pay for the infrastructure? They do. And what would happen is it'd be the same as if they bought a piece of property, poured a concrete pad on it, and then went belly up. Whoever they're, whoever they had paid that, whoever was contracted to do it, would turn around and have to sue them, go through all that, excuse me, that process. So, the easiest way to think of it is, they're building it, they're footing the whole bill. Whoever they subcontract with and do all those things, that's who would be on the hook for the money, not us, because they're the ones performing the function, doing, laying the work, bringing the materials and doing all that. Again, it's a private enterprise with them, so it's one of those, we don't have to worry about it, thankfully. This is one of the, these don't come around very often. I'd like to think we learned our lessons from the Indian Lake one, whatever mistakes were there, and the county attorney and the other attorneys involved have done an amazing job to really protect the county's interests.
Mr. Graves? Okay.
I'm done.
All right. Commissioner Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Candidly, I think this is the craziest conversation in the world, and I want to mention a couple of things. Indian Lake has come up two or three times. We know that was praised by Governor Haslam's office and economic development as probably the best TIF in the history of the state. We know they wrote letters that sent to each one of us as commissioners back in the time encouraging to do the TIFs. So, and Indian Lake paid off, Madam Law Director, Madam Law, Lawing, correct me if I'm wrong, about 10 to 12 years prior. The, I've heard it mentioned, and here's what's so hypocritical, in my opinion. We hear all the time, we want developers to do more, we want developers to pay for all this stuff and do all this stuff. That's what they're doing. Every time we've asked developers to do more, that's exactly how this one's working. It's the same thing we did for Portland not long ago, as just mentioned. Schools were mentioned. Everybody has their opportunity to do due diligence instead of maybe grandstanding, I don't know, whatever you want to call it. Dr. Phillips, you have...
Yeah, I got, let's avoid the, avoid that, Mr. Goode, please.
Dr. Phillips, you have the opportunity to speak with Dr. Phillips. I have. He's met with the developers twice. The school's not an issue. He's talked to them about the roundabout and how the buses would work. All three entities have approved this overwhelmingly. The city of Gallatin, Hendersonville was unanimous, and our planning department, and we've already voted on this once. This is one of the best opportunities we've had, we've had, and the best economic scenario the way it is set up with all three entities and the way this is set up. And it would be foolish not to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Wright.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at for the rink to be complete and us to start having an influx of sales tax and so forth into the county?
Mr. Wright, if you're okay, I'm going to, with that objection, I'll suspend the rules and if y'all would like to answer, just give us a, we don't need the full timeline, but just an overview of, of the development. And you can, yeah, you can go to that mic right there.
Which one? Oh, thank you. So, in rough terms, we're looking at probably about 12 months in infrastructure. Might be as much as 14 or 16. Somewhere in that process, we would begin vertical construction on the ice facility. So, let's say that we're six months in, we're probably looking at 12 to 14 months again on the vertical construction. So, in that 18 to 24-month window, I would say is a realistic estimation.
So, in three to five years, we should have some type of influx of taxes coming in to the county?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Mansfield.
Mr. Chairman, basically what I'm hearing is that the developers have the money for this, the TIF isn't needed, since they've already got able to do this, and that's kind of the whole point. I don't see the TIF as necessary, doesn't, as you pointed out, doesn't stop them from building the industrial and the commercial project, doesn't stop the county from collecting taxes, but what the county is not going to do is collect $40 million over 30 years, and that's just a fact. And so, that's, we're, we're basically financing them the cost upfront or by deferring the payments we're going to get for 30 years, $40 million, to pay them back for something that we shouldn't be even having to worry about. If the, if the project's viable, it's going to pay for itself. We shouldn't have to pay for it. So, I think that's the biggest point being said here, and it sounds like the project is viable and that the money's not needed for the TIF. And as soon as the tax revenue starts coming in, it's not paying off debt service for this or for this project, it's going straight to the county coffers as a, as a positive on the, on the local economy, because industrial, commercial, you know, retail are definitely budget boosters, not budget drainers like residential is. And so, that definitely is a positive, and I love that aspect of this project. I just don't agree that we need a TIF. Doesn't sound like it's viable. I've not heard, I heard an argument actually saying that we really don't need it based on what was said because of the financing. So, I'm, I'm opposed to this. Citizens are opposed to this. They just see this as a government handout and corporate welfare, to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Mr. Hinton.
I'm going to try to explain this to myself, and y'all listen and correct me, okay?
This is going to be the best part of the night. I'm, I'm excited. I'm really excited about this, Mr. Hinton.
It'll, it'll probably be in the best elementary terms that I can get it stuck in, if I'm supposed to understand it. When Tractor Supply came to Portland, we was delighted to have them. We needed Tractor Supply in Portland for competition or whatever else. And apparently, we made a deal with them that said, you can pay the taxes on this property as it now stands, and you're going to put a building on it, and obviously, the taxes with the correct appraisal would be a whole bunch higher than this, that vacant lot was. But now, when you get, when you save enough on your taxes to pay for the improvements, then we're going to go back and tax you, just like we do everybody else, and at that point in time, then we'll begin to get revenue coming into our tax base, and Sumner County and the city of Portland both will be happy when that happens. Now, we may have used that as an enticement. I don't know all the conversation that went on, but, but Tractor Supply showed up in Portland, and we approved, we approved this process here. We contributed county taxes to that project, and we've got Tractor Supply in Portland. This is, apparently, this is not an uncommon thing for municipalities and counties and cities and whatever to do to entice people to come and, and build in their area, hopefully, hopefully increase in the quality of life and all the things that goes with that. Now, if it was a project we didn't like, I guess we'd have the opportunity to turn them down. So, I don't, if, if everything plays out exactly the way it's being described, I don't know how we'd lose money. Somewhere down the road, when this thing gets finally paid off, there's going to be a, there's going to be a pretty decent win. Be interested, some of you will live long enough to see when the end of that comes. I may not, but you ought to, you ought to come down here sometime when all this is over with and say, just how much money would take off, did we collect this year off this development out here after we, after we worked a TIF with them and got them to come into Sumner County? I, I can't, yes, yes, it's not quick. We don't, we won't see money next year, but they're going to develop something out there that the county can utilize. I'm sure the, I'm sure our people here in the county building will make sure that they do it right, and we've done, we've apparently covered all the details where we don't have, where we're not creating a problem with this development. It's, all that's been worked through. So, from what everybody knows up to this point, it's a good project. Now, the way to get this project is to, is to let them use, not the tax money that we're getting on it now, we're still going to get that amount of tax money, but the additional tax money, we'll defer until the debt's paid off, and then we'll go back to 100%. Now, that's, that's what I think I've heard that we're talking about doing here tonight. And I don't, and even, even if they default on it, there's a process to take care of that. So, I, I don't, I don't know any way to lose this, but now, there's a lot of stuff I don't know. I've made some awful good investments that wasn't worth a flip, but, but, but I'm going to vote for this on the belief that this is a, this is a pretty good system. for this, on the belief that this is a, this is a pretty good system for municipalities to be able to build things that they want in their community, and entice people to come and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Witt?
Call for the question.
Okay. All right. Questions, we call, or second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goode. All right, 16 votes will end debate. Otherwise, we'll continue back to the floor.
Yeah. I'm trying to get it to shut up and get on.
All right, call for the questions. On the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 19 affirmative votes, question is approved.
All right, we'll proceed now to vote on the main motion. A yes vote approves the TIF, a no vote is in opposition to it.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 20 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, we will go now to, Mr. Ring, did you have anything else for legislative?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Financial Management, 2202-09, Mr. Becker.
Let me get to my, scroll to the page, apologize. Yes, so the, the Financial Management Subcommittee met tonight, and then followed by the Financial Management, I guess, Main Committee, or whatnot. And so 2202-09 was, was discussed. I guess, I guess Legislative had approved it prior contingent, that the Financial Management would approve it. So anyway, so it's, it's a consultant selection policy for the projects funded in whole, or in part with funds provided by the Federal Highway Administration, or Tennessee Department of Transportation. And one thing that Mr. Lawing, and if you wanna expand on what I'm about to say, one thing he wanted to add, and make sure, is that, that all the required documents are sent to the Finance Department before a PO is issued, or a payment is made. So we wanted to make sure that we added that comment. Mr. Long, is that, is that, capture everything?
Yes.
Okay, so that captured everything. So I would wanna make sure that, again, that all the required documentation be sent to the Finance Department before a PO is issued, or a payment is made.
Yeah, I think we'll just include that in your motion.
Include that in the motion, so, so I so move.
Okay, motion made, seconded by Commissioner Shale. I see no one in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 24 votes are entered. Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, it is approved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Becker, did you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Chris Taylor for Budget.
Yes, sir. Budget number 2202-04, appropriating up to $100,000 from the local capital projects' restricted fund balance for repair and paving of the First United Methodist Church of Gallatin Parking Area. It's the one that we use across from the Sheriff's Department. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. I think Commissioner Stewart had the second, but I don't know. I think I heard about four people in there altogether. So, Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're in the queue.
If I got this correct, this didn't, I don't remember it coming before General Ops, so I wasn't at the budget meeting. You said across from the sheriff's office?
It's, it's that, it's the, yeah, you know which one I'm talking about, Mo? The one that we have down there that we use. It's the one that the Sheriff's Department employs, and everybody else uses all the time. And we use it for court during the week, and everything else, so...
Right next to the vet clinic.
Ooh, yeah, I think that's right.
No.
No, it's...
Between the old antique mall and the church.
Because we paved the one next to the vet clinic already. Make sure we wouldn't pave the next again.
No, that one's good. That's the Baptist one. We gotta, we gotta balance out and get the Methodist. We gotta have religious balance. We'd have the Crusades going on or something. Yeah. Start with the Road Department, Mr. Taylor. Yeah. Okay. All right, I see no one else in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Taylor?
I don't wanna wreck it. That's the first time we've ever had one of those in Budget. 2205-05, appropriating one-half million dollars from local capital projects' restricted fund balance to repair, replace roofs in the jail sheriff's office and courts, and repair roof for the Gallatin Library and emergency medical services. Obviously, we will get bids for all of these. I hope we can lock them in sooner rather than later, because it seems like every day it's getting way more expensive. So I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Mansfield, you're in the queue.
Just wanted to clarify, this is not for the admin building, these roofs and the railings, right?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hinton.
Could we ask that these bids come back before this body, just for information's sake, please?
Commissioner Todd, do you wanna, do you wanna answer that? Go ahead, you got the mic.
Mr. Hinton, sir, I'll make sure we report it. So whenever, whenever they get done, we'll just ask the county mayor to make sure, and then we'll include it in the minutes for the budget at that point, and then that way, we can bring it to the full commission, if that works.
Yeah, that's okay. If it's just in minutes, we do a lot of this. We throw lumps of money out there, and we're gonna bid this, and we probably ought to be studious enough to go back and look, see how, how lucky we got.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We will make sure and include it in budget. If I ask David, I know it'll happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hinton, and Mr. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, I would like a report on how much is in the restricted capital projects fund balance after this project.
Okay. Commissioner, Mr. Long, can you answer that for us?
Before this project, there's somewhere around slightly over $3 million. Before these two projects tonight.
Uncommitted.
Uncommitted in local capital. Before these two projects.
So we're talking about maybe around 1.4, 1.4 and a half, somewhere around there, a million?
Somewhere around there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Long. All right, I see no one else in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Unanimously approved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourned.
We're adjourned.